Yes, I think you folks have a good permission to have the Illinois promise that zoning, if properly done, can be a good and beneficial thing. I take that explicitly because that's not a premise that I share, but I get to make sense that all of you would. And the reason why I don't is that zoning regulation is fundamental and subtractive. I mean, it doesn't convey any privileges or rights or anything. The default is you can't do it, and then you carve out things, but you can do this and you can do that and so forth. And that seems to be the default. I don't know if that's according to statutes, it's cost effective. The default appears to be prohibited, not permissive. But it's for that reason that I don't accept the promise that zoning can be good. I just think it's inherently a bad thing. And I'm glad for the opportunity to articulate it that way. I got an insight from meetings last night, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pete. And yeah, I'm sure you're right that many folks, some agree with you and some don't. But anyway, that's not for us to discuss here this time at least. Anybody else wish to address the zoning commission? All right, not seeing or hearing anything. I think we'll move on to the regular meeting. Let me find my draft agenda. It is, that's a draft agenda, sorry about that. Okay, so the first up is the approval of the minutes from the previous meeting. I actually have a couple of changes, and I think Barb had noted some things. So Barb, did those changes already get made?
As far as I know, I have not seen the changes that I suggested. So what I will do right now is to move postponement of approval of the minutes until the next meeting, once we can incorporate all the changes that have been requested.
Okay, do you have a second for that motion?
Yes, sir.
All right, all is in favor of moving the consideration of the minutes to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed to that? Okay, we'll do that. And yeah, I didn't have a chance to write up. I had an email that never got completed with a couple of changes I was going to request, so I'll give time for that as well. All right, Mr. Tim Murray, do you have a report from the town board for us?
Yeah, sorry about my voice, it's bad allergy season again, like it always is. At the last town board meeting, which was on Wednesday, there was discussion amongst, led by Catherine Goldberg, regarding the agriculture committees' concern that agriculture issues weren't being addressed by the zoning commission. It wasn't framed quite that way, but there was some question about it. So we thought it would be helpful for the, for Nan to, to join a small meeting with Catherine Goldberg, who's the liaison to the egg committee, and a couple of people from that committee, and Jean, which we, which Catherine set up in lightning speed. So it happened yesterday afternoon, and Jean, at the last minute, also invited a couple of commission members, I think Michelle, Michelle and Barb. So this ended up being an informational meeting where Nan gave quite an extensive presentation, which I'm sure she'd be willing to share with the zoning commission, I think she has it written out, of the, the moments and the ways in which farming and agriculture is explicitly addressed in the current draft zoning law. And then there was a discussion of various options and tools and, and approaches that might be taken towards zoning. And one of the things that the agricultural committee is doing is it's doing, it's making a, it's, it's submitting a grant for, and I'm sorry, I've just forgotten the terminology.
Agricultural and farm land protection plan.
For an agricultural and farm land protection plan, which would map out more specifically, potentially agricultural soils, different practices, that sort of thing. And Nan explained that that, that, that process could take two to three years. So there was some discussion of how it could be supplementary to zoning practice. The other thing that came up, which was quite interesting in that our report is that that some members of the agricultural committee had, had mentioned, it seemed to me to be their regret, or at least their question of why there wasn't an agricultural overlay, which you all know that you discussed in quite some detail, et cetera, et cetera. And if, if, if I read the meeting properly, one of the informal recommendations, and of course, this was a subgroup, subcommittee of both groups, so it wasn't anything official or formal, but there was some interest in perhaps thinking about including the agricultural overlay as a, as an empty template in the zoning plan, which with the idea that it could be filled in later down the line if the agriculture committee then, in two or three years' time, came up with a proposal. But that's just roughly, the, the meeting was lasted about an hour, and I thought it was, from an outside perspective as a, as an observer, I thought it was a pretty productive exchange.
Great, thank you.
Have to report.
Okay, well, that's good. Thank you, and I'm glad that took place. Barbara and Michelle, do you have anything you want to add about your feedback from that meeting since you were there?
Um, yes, I'll, I'll just add that I think coming out of the meeting, there were a number of questions that were posed to the agriculture committee with a request that they work on answers, responses to those questions, and then provide that information to the zoning commission for information purposes and to stimulate discussion among the zoning commission. I think the members of the agriculture committee who were there were quite explicit in acknowledging what Tim did, which was that was just a portion of the agriculture committee, and there is probably not a distinct and clear consensus on all matters within the agriculture committee. And so I look forward to receiving whatever responses the agriculture committee is able and willing to prepare and share with the zoning commission.
Great, thanks. Michelle, anything from you?
No, I would just agree with everything that Barb said. I don't, I don't think I had anything. You know, I personally expressed that my, I have a little bit of confusion about the ways that they feel that we're not addressing agriculture in, in the plan. And so, you know, I'm looking forward to the answers to some of the questions that Barb and I posed.
Great, that, that sounds like a profitable way to proceed. I have one question. There is a phone that's connected here. Is there any chance that's Jean trying to get in by a phone? Does anyone know either her cell phone number or know who 607-342-3244 is? Is that one of us on a second line or?
I'm asking, I'm trying to mute.
Yeah, that could be Bruce. Bruce, is that your, is that your phone?
No, but I would like to say something.
Okay, one sec, let's see if we can.
That, that is not Jean's cell phone.
Okay, great, thanks. Let's, let's move on then. Bruce, go ahead.
I was just, I had brought up in a couple of meetings back that we suggested that we should consider some of the things that the ad committee had said, and a kind of myth that I didn't get invited to this meeting. This doesn't make a hell of a lot of sense to me that the whole committee would, at least inform us of it.
Can I respond to that?
Sure, and then I'll say my piece. Yeah, go ahead, Michelle.
As far as I know, Catherine Goldberg set that meeting up. It happened very quickly. I, I myself don't know why everyone wasn't invited, so I think that's something you have to ask Catherine Goldberg.
Well, I think whoever's in charge of our committee should have said something and invited everybody.
Again, I really, Bruce, I really think you should talk to Catherine Goldberg about it. I don't think there's any point in, in blaming the people that are currently here in this meeting.
Tim, you want to add, and then I'm gonna, okay, go ahead, Tim.
Yeah, I think that my understanding is that Catherine set this up as an informal gathering that would be small, and if both committees were, if the entire zoning committee were invited, it would end up being a public meeting, which would have just probably not followed her anticipation of just a short informal fact sharing with Nan and the agricultural committee. So that's my understanding. But I, again, this was Catherine's meeting, so I don't know the logic behind it, frankly.
All right, so it does sound like Bruce, you might want to talk with Catherine. I actually have great sympathy with your viewpoint, Bruce. My view is that, you know, it's very reasonable for Jean, for example, to act as a representative of the zoning commission. That's her job, as I see it, as chair, or maybe designate someone. But it feels a little weird and unfair to be inviting portions of the committee to a meeting and not other portions. So I think as a policy, it's something zoning commission could address and reach an agreement with Jean, that, that if there's going to be something. But Tim points out an important point. If we all go to something, that actually changes the nature of the meeting, because by definition, then open meeting laws would have to sort of apply, and that changes the, the, the whole nature, and makes it open to the public and public notice and everything. So again, I think often we should have one representative or something, and something like this. But that's, that's my own take on it, and I think the zoning commission should address that in the future with Jean present, so.
Well, I also don't feel that I should be pressed, because I was not saying or blaming anyone. I was just stating that I believed that's the way it should have run, so.
Okay, cool. I, I appreciate that correction of the tenor of your remark. That's, that's great, Bruce, and I'm glad you see it that way. Okay.
Okay.
Now, all right, so the next item on the agenda is to look back at the zoning map a bit, in particular, the question of Caroline, not the town, but the location in Caroline, called Caroline, being included as a hamlet zone in the draft zoning law, and in what way. Nan had sent out some maps. There's been a little bit of discussion. Jean had shared some emails with some residents of Caroline with us. Ernie took a drive by and all, all that. So I think we can open up this up to discussion of zoning commission members about making a, an additional hamlet, which would include some portion of, of the area of Caroline called Caroline. Who would like to speak?
Can, can we see the map? I think Nan said she was gonna post it.
I'm getting up, I'm getting it up. I don't know exactly, let me put this one up. So this is the parcel map, and the colors on this map represent the parcel classification code, so we have, sorry, I have to make this smaller so I can see better. So yellow is agriculture, this kind of orange color is residential, gray is vacant, and yeah, so right around in the hamlet area, that's, that's what that would be. So I, I thought this would be useful just to see where it is in the kind of the layout of the parcels.
And, no, that's great. Okay, so, and as usual, once we're in the sort of screen share mode, it's, I probably, I can't see the whole zoning commission likely, so I will try to call on hands. And Bruce, you are tiny, so you may have to just speak up if you want to say something, because I can't possibly see you waving your hand in the little image I have of the town hall. So who would like to say something? I think Barb's hand is up. Bruce, did you want to say anything?
We're talking about the parcel that we're looking to get the letter about to Jean?
No, no, that, that will, I don't know if we're taking that up at this meeting or not, but the current question has to do with the Caroline region of the town of Caroline, and making that a hamlets. This is a question we started with last meeting. Jean had sent emails about this like a month ago. This has, does not have to do with reclassifying some of the property near Sladeville Springs. So what, you look around Pacific Road here, that, all that housing density, because that's an historically hamlet area of the town of Caroline. Thank you, Nan, for that little circumnavigation. So the question is whether to, to create an additional hamlet, official hamlet in the, in the zoning plan for that region. And I see Barb ready to speak, so Barb, go ahead.
Um, thank you. Yeah, I, just to get discussion moving in a proper motion oriented way, I'm going to move that we do designate a Caroline hamlet to have use, allowed uses in the use table and dimensions tables similar to Caroline Center, and that the rough boundaries of the hamlet include Route 79 from Speed Hill Road and Cecil Keane Lane, the Flatiron Road area abutting Route 79, and the Pacific Road area with specific, specific mapping to be determined.
Okay, so just to clarify, so you're suggesting it stop at sort of Pacific Road as you head to the east, not extend further east than Pacific Road?
Um, no, extend, extend further east, but, but again, specific mapping to be identified. I don't, I don't know what all of the road names are that, or parcel numbers are that might be logical to propose here. And, and Bill, just so you know, Jean has joined and.
Yay, okay, great. And I'll just, I want to talk with one thing, and then I'm gonna call on Jean, so.
Remember, I made a motion.
I did, I did, so I'm gonna second in discussion, but I just want to clarify one thing about the motion, because I probably just missed it. You mentioned uses similar to Caroline Center, we suggesting dimensions similar to Caroline Center as well.
That's what I said, yeah.
Okay, great.
Uses and dimensions similar to Caroline Center.
Okay, well.
Just as a doodle, is that about where you were talking about?
Yeah, I might, I might suggest roughly yes, but I might suggest extending it a little bit farther east. Again, you know, specific boundaries to be determined.
Okay.
And so first off, Mark, make sure that Jean is a co-host?
Yes, she is a co-host.
Okay, great. So Jean, I'm calling on you, and you can unmute yourself, and if you are able, take over.
Don't know exactly where we are, but sorry, we have lost power.
Oh, my goodness.
Come back. Even though I pray that it wouldn't, it did. So I will add to this conversation that I did go out and look where the signs are that say Hamlet of Caroline. If you're coming towards Sladeville Springs from the town border, there is a sign at fairly near Level Green Road. And then if you're coming from the west, oddly enough, there is not a Hamlet of Caroline sign, there is a Town of Caroline sign in the middle of nowhere. I think that somebody just put up the wrong sign at some point when one came down, and that's, that's at Flatiron Road is where it is. So it's there, kind of a thing, near the intersection of Flatiron Road, and it's not a border, so I don't know where there would be a Town of Caroline sign there. It's just very strange. I'll take my hand down.
Okay, so.
Just going to add information about this. My recollection is that that sign occurred many, many years ago, when Tompkins County put up a sign that said, "Welcome to Ithaca." Out there, remember, it had the sign with the sailboats and all of that, and that raised such a ruckus that it was replaced by a Town of Caroline sign.
Okay.
Um, Jean, so we have just started the discussion of Caroline as, as a hamlet, and Barb made a motion, and the, you know, sketch you see there is roughly what Nan sketched based on, you know, what, what Jean was, sorry, Barb was saying. So that's it, that we're just starting the discussion now. We haven't even had a second to the motion yet. Are you in a position or a place where you feel you can run the meeting from here?
Yes.
Okay, great, I'm, I'm gonna, let's see, abdicate, there we go.
You're thrown, thank you, Bill. So does anyone else want to add to this discussion?
Yes, please. This is Ernie. Mark, if you could turn on my video, since I've got no way of raising my hand, that would be nice.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, that although the Caroline hamlet does not have a church or a post office or any of the other attributes of a specifically designated hamlet, it, it used to, and it has a history, and I think that it actually has a kind of a character of a neighborhood, and I think it's worth representing. And I think that, you know, some sort of small commercial development is entirely appropriate to the, to this area, along with more like development, denser development that has already proceeded there. It's been noted that a lot of the lots are quite deep, which, you know, may or may not present a problem if we are trying to limit development to Route 79 corridor, but I don't really see that as an issue. I think it's important to look at what is actually going on, on the other side of the, of the town line, so that we can establish a zone that's sympathetic with our neighbors to the east. But I'm, I would certainly second this motion.
Ernie, you should be able to turn on the radio.
Thank you.
Great, great, I'm Bill.
Okay. All right, and indeed, I was going to formally, you know, second the motion, so I think we have it on, on the floor now for sure. And yeah, I'm, I'm fine with this, except I, you know, I think we'll have to see what maybe Rick and Nan also think when they, they look at it, you know, whether indeed Cecil Keane Lane and stuff, there's some small parcels there, so maybe that's appropriate for the hamlet, or maybe we should keep it more just to the east of Flatiron. I, you know, look at that. My recollect, my suggestion would indeed be, and we try to minimize this, but this is a prime spot for it, it seems to me, where some of these lots that are very deep on the south side of 79, that the hamlet zone only include, as Nan has sort of sketched, the, the northern portion of those. I think that, that would be the most appropriate way to, to have denser development in this area. So I'm in favor of something kind of like what has been sketched and read here, probably a bit, a little bit contracted from that, but that's great.
Okay, Michelle, and then Nan.
Yeah, I, I agree that it should be recognized as a hamlet, and I guess my only question is to why go to the Cecil Keane Lane? That seems, doesn't that butt up right against West, or right against Sladeville Springs? Where's the boundary with Sladeville Springs?
Uh, you mean the hamlet?
Yes.
Let me, here, hold on.
Way down the road.
Yeah, yeah.
Because that, because.
No, that's.
I'm sorry, I got confused. I kept thinking it was.
Toby Town, that's a little Toby Town development there.
No, okay, I'm fine with this. I, I was in my head thinking Speed Hill Road was Buffalo, but I got it.
Okay.
I get it, I retract that, but I agree with the motion.
Okay, thank you. Nan?
I, I was just gonna bring up what Bill already brought up, was that the bound, if you did this, the boundary did, would not have to go all the way down to the end of the parcels down here, but it could be some, some amount of space, you know, closer to the road, keep it tighter to the road.
Yes.
So that was, that was all.
Thank you.
Let me.
Okay, so is there anyone else who wants to speak to the motion? Otherwise, I'll tell the question.
Yeah. I agree, I agree with it being a hamlet, but I don't agree with, we have a meeting the 30th, I would really like to look, we're not, we're not going to vote now on the boundaries, are we?
No.
Okay, because I would like to really sit down with the map and look at the boundaries a little closer before we voted on the boundaries. But I agree, it should be a hamlet, so.
Yeah, just to clarify, the motion included language with the specific boundaries to be determined.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, with that motion, all in favor, say aye.
I think, Michelle, do you have something to add, Michelle?
Hands up again.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, we did get a letter, didn't we, that you, you sent us about someone who objected to commercial, any commercial use around Toby Town, I think.
Yes, I wrote to two people who had spoken, who I thought had spoken to it at the town meeting, Kathy Nix and Mr. Quick, because he had, I, in my notes, had that he had said that he also thought it should be a hamlet, but then he wrote back to me and said he didn't say that. Kathy has not gotten back to him yet, I think there's a illness in the family at the moment. But somebody else wrote and said I should put it up on one of the town discussion groups, and somebody did write to me and said, yes, she thought it should be a hamlet. She thought it could be called Caroline, or maybe even go back to the original name of Toby Town, and that she did not think it should be a commercial, that it's been a very long time since there have been commercial uses there. Bill?
Yeah, I just want to add, so, you know, the word "commercial" sometimes confuses me, because of course we have a commercial zoning district, and I think that some folks may have thought the proposal to make this like the focus commercial district that's further west on Route 79. So it was unclear to me what the people were, if they were objecting to that concept or to any commercial development in, in that area.
I will ask her.
And yeah, so I'm, I'm hopeful that in terms of a mixed commercial development, similar to what the use table lays out for Caroline Center, where it's, you know, most focused in home businesses and a little, a few other, sort of a handful of other businesses, that would be acceptable and an appropriate use for that area.
I will ask Karen, I will ask Kathy Nix, who is the other person who has suggested that, that question. Okay, thank you. With that, all in favor of Barbara's motion that we determine borders later, but in favor of having that be a hamlet, say aye.
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 Want me to draft something for you to consider with the boundaries, or just discuss it next month or next meeting?
I think it'd be great if you drafted something and brought us a map, that would be very nice. And maybe some sense of how many parcels there are in that area would be really great. Um, okay, what do you say?
Should we discuss?
Go ahead.
As long as we're on the subject, the, the, the note we got about the, the parcel that wanted to, you know, be included over in Sladeville, next to Fuller Lane.
Yes.
Sure, I, I move we insert that discussion now, at least some discussion of it, and I'll, we want the map up again, Nan, because I probably want to have you.
I, I'm getting that up.
Great, wonderful, that sounds great.
I second the motion.
Does someone want to talk about that note?
Okay, so, so actually, I think at some point, we're, this is good, but I think we're going to need to see that exact same parcel map you showed us, but this, this, well, no, no, I, I maybe folks do, let's start with this.
Okay, sorry.
Great.
Yeah, it doesn't really show you it in the wider context, so I can put that other one back on.
I didn't, I didn't quite understand the, the letter. It was, it said something about the back part would be this, and the front part would be that, and I expect, you know, where would that line be drawn, or is that line already been drawn, or, or what's, what's going on here?
I think I'll find the letter and.
Let me get, let me get that other parcel map up.
Okay, let me, I'm gonna read what it says.
You focus on, yeah, basically Creamery Road, midline 79, out to Hamilton, so a little bit to the, yeah.
Not this one, where the hand is?
No, no.
No, no, the parcel in question is just the right, just the east of Fuller Lane. It's a large parcel to the east of Fuller Lane.
Between Hamilton and Fuller Lane.
So the left, to the left of number of 79, the, the number seven.
That's great, so just zoom in, that's pretty good.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so I will read you what the request is. First change is to incorporate more of this parcel, which is tax parcel four dash one dash one two point two, into the Hamlet of Sladeville Springs. Currently, a portion of the parcel along 79 is included. We would like to move this parcel into a hamlet. This parcel not only has road frontage on 79, but also on the Hamilton, to the east, a town road. The attached map would outline a desired and. The attached map would outline a desired inclusion in the hamlet. Hamlets are created to try to focus more density in them versus in the ag rural districts. Looking at the Slaterville Springs hamlet, there is currently no expansion room for future growth, including this request would allow for more growth in the ham. The second change is related to the same parcel. We would request that the land north of the Fuller Road subdivision also be included in the hamlet. To the same attached map. At the time the Fuller Road subdivision was approved, the town required a 50-foot easement be designated to extend Fuller Road into this land, part of tax parcel four point one, four dot dash one dash one two point two for more development. We have no plans at this time to develop this land parcel, but this would allow us to do so in the future to help our farm continue. It is now in the state ag district, this parcel, and we are making this request with the understanding that this would not affect the ag district status. And this is from Bonnie Crispell, Harkreaves, and Rachel Crispell. So let us look at the map then.
Do you have the zoning map up now? Are you looking at the zoning map?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, well, we're seeing your parcel map. We might, at some point, need to see the existing Slaterville Springs.
Yeah, let me, let me switch these, um.
Yeah, if there's some way to draw what her proposal is.
She did send us a little map.
Right, so as far as I could tell, she was wanting the entire parcel. I mean.
No, 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 no.
I didn't think so, but, okay, she outlined the entire parcel, but yes, I agree with.
No, she didn't. No, if you look at it carefully, no, I think that she cut off a, a piece up at the top, I'm pretty sure. See, cuz Fuller Lane stops at a hammerhead, and I think the town wanted them to continue it north. Um, and then that would, and then that would feed into this property, and then she drew the line just to the north of that, and then jogged it back down. It was kind of a little, a little, a little odd.
Yeah, it looks like, um, it looks like, um, it looked from, I'm comparing on both of my screens, it looks like it's, would be a line that crosses right about here.
Right.
Lined up with this line, so it would go right about here. But then, the only issue, I mean, then there's an issue of how, then you created a landlocked parcel back in here, how, how you get into this parcel.
Well, it's not landlocked until somebody subdivides, zoning doesn't, doesn't affect that.
And someone point where we're talking about on this map to me, cuz I'm not seeing it, not understanding it.
There we go. Yeah.
So, so does anybody know where, um, the right-of-way, the 50-foot right-of-way is? Just to be clear where that stands, uh, from what she said, um, that's already then.
I assume it's the center line of Fuller Lane headed straight north. That would be, that would be the normal kind of approach is to, you know.
But, but just, but just that portion then of the parcel, not extending up through the entire parcel.
Right, so that gives her, or the owner of that land, the opportunity to hook into that road right there, saving themselves the expense of pushing the road off of Route 79 to access that property.
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at, um, the environmental resource map. It looks like, it's, it's not exactly, but between Hamilton and the edge of this development here, um, looking like maybe somewhere around in here, maybe a little, this part right in the middle here, looks like there are wetlands in there.
Yes, there's a, there's a pond, and then, um, a small, I don't know, stream or creek or something leading into that pond. It looks like from the map that was submitted to us.
Yeah, so it's somewhere right around.
Oh, yeah, right, there's a, yeah, there's a pond, um, yeah. Yeah, I think, you know, for a lot of these things, it's kind of, you know, boots on the ground is, is much more useful. Um, I mean, this certainly gives us a, a, a good sense of it, but, um, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it's kind of six to one, half a dozen of the other. Why, why couldn't, why couldn't it be part of the, the hamlet?
Nan, is, is there any, um, is there any prime or statewide importance, uh, ag land in, in this portion, the red outlined portion of the parcel?
Sorry for the back and forth here to.
Yeah, no, it's hard, that's.
Get this up here.
And to that end, I think I'm gonna suggest that what we try to do is identify some of the key questions, like, is there prime farmland? Where's the wetland exactly, et cetera? Uh, I'm not sure I'll feel comfortable making a decision on this question today.
No, no, no.
Yeah.
No, but I, I, I think also that if the town's asked for a easement or right-of-way, and it was granted, that, that should be considered also.
This map that comes from your comprehensive plan, as you can see, is not very good to, to, it's not very clear, but all along 79, I mean, there, I think this might be the wetland, somewhere, I don't know, somewhere in here. So there, you know, there's this part of prime soils that are green in here. So I would have to, let me see if I have a better map of the prime soil. This one was not a good one.
I mean, I've got a higher-res copy of that, but, um, I'm not sure I can locate it in the next couple of minutes.
Yeah, here, let me try this one. This one might be a little better.
Well, none of our other lines have been drawn with any regard for prime agricultural lands or wetlands or anything else, have they?
Well, we actually took some land and put it in the ag zone in between West Slaterville and Slaterville Springs precisely because it was prime ag land. So no, I disagree. That was the main one. And there was another farmland all along Route 79, cuz it was active farmland that was taken out of Beesimer. So to some extent, we have.
And Fuller Road is shown on that map. It's to the left of the arrow, um, that big black arrow, Fuller Road is to the left of that.
Yeah, uh, yeah, it's, it's a faint line in between there, yeah.
Yes. And, and so this does appear that some of this parcel has some green and red, uh, whatever, uh, that is key.
Those are statewide importance.
Uh, no, the pink is, is if, is prime if drained, I believe. Uh, there's no statewide importance in this map.
Yes, prime if drained, you're right.
Thank you.
Um, Mark, someone is trying to get into the waiting room. Okay, so we have looked at prime farmland, um, lands of state wetlands. Anything else anyone wants to look at? I think Bruce said something about, um, have they granted an easement to the town?
Yes. She said they.
Um, I'm not sure she said exactly that. She said there was an extension, so I need to go back and look at that later, but we will check that. Uh, anything else people wanna consider? Um, I, I would certainly say that she has a point. There isn't a lot of other developable, developable land in the town at the moment, in, in the hamlet of Slaterville Springs.
Michelle?
Michelle?
Uh, I'm just wondering, so I think she said, uh, she, they granted the town an easement, so how would that, I'm just curious, how would that affect, uh, our thinking on that?
I don't think, I don't think, I don't think she granted an easement. She said there is an easement on the Fuller Lane property.
Oh.
So there's, that's kind of common for the town to be looking to the future and extending that road to the next property. And so there's a provision for that to happen, which just her line kind of recognizes.
Right, so, so, Ernie, if I understand you right, you're saying the easement, of course, is on those two parcels at the end of Fuller Lane.
That would be my.
And it probably stops actually at the Crispell property.
Yeah, so, yeah. Nobody has an easement on the land, yeah.
Specific language in, in her message said, "At the time the Fuller Road subdivision was approved, the town required a 50-foot road easement be designated to extend Fuller Road into this land, part of tax parcel four one one two two, for more development."
All right, so I guess we should get a copy of that, just so that it might inform our thinking, and if it does or doesn't, we, I guess we could actually look at what the easement is.
Yeah.
Whatever that's, the right-of-way. That's 50 foot.
And yeah, I think that what, it would be certainly useful to see that and, uh, figure out a way to see the, the prime farmland and the wetland on this map. But those constraints can be handled if the parcel's developed, right? I mean, we certainly, they can't develop on wetland anyway, so that's not a showstopper necessarily. The prime soil is a bit more of a concern because, you know, if you develop it, you develop it, right? I mean, you can say, oh, we'll stay to the edge, but you know, if, if it's that narrower part, they're gonna, it'll get cut up. So I think it's worth seeing on the map, so we can think about that. You know, to, to foreshadow my thinking, I think what they're requesting is not unreasonable, but a bit larger than I'm sort of comfortable with. It's, it's an awful lot of, of good farmland, so, you know, I'll be somewhere between where we are now and what their full request is probably when I, when I finally settle out on this.
Okay. Um, anyone else have anything else they'd like to look at? Otherwise, I will ask the town to put, put some of this together for us about the easement and ask Nan to look at the prime farmland and wetland there, uh, in more detail, or Rick to do that. Um, is that good? Good. Um, I think I sent you all my definition of a hamlet. Is that correct?
Oh, yeah, I looked for it the other day again, Gene. I, I'm hoping you can send it again, because I couldn't find it in that email.
Okay, I can. I will find it and do that. I don't have it in front of me right now, but I will find that and do it. I will include it in the minutes for tonight, so that, um, people will know what it is. And we can vote on it the next time. So, do we have proof of agenda for tonight?
We did. Uh, one person spoke, uh, Mr. Hoyt spoke.
Okay, and, um, did, um, anyone discuss with you the, the meeting that we, the small conversation we had with the ag committee yesterday?
Yes, yes, we had an excellent summary from, from Mr. Tim Murray and some follow-up with Barb and Michelle.
Thank you. Um, so we have talked about the hamlet of Caroline, and, um, I'm sorry, I don't have the definition right in front of me. A consideration of other places in the town for commercial zone is something that we were going to look at now. So, um, does anyone have any thoughts?
I mean, I guess I've got a couple. Uh, and one is this spot right here, uh, you know, and I think I sort of mentioned this a little bit the other day. So I'm a little, I don't know, uh, wondering about some things, but, so we have this pink focus commercial district, and on the south side of Route 79, there's basically two parcels, uh, maybe three parcels actually in it. And just to the east of the pink zone, there's a large rural residential property. And then there's a couple of things right along the road. And I'm wondering about the wisdom or unwisdom of designating, say, that larger parcel, or that plus the two ones by the road, as also part of the focus commercial district. Now, on the, what goes into my thinking a bit is, so, you know, if the person who's using that as a residence continues to do so, zoning, making it part of the focus commercial district should not affect their assessment, and therefore not affect their taxes, because, as we've been informed by the, you know, the assessment department, they assess based on current use. So what would happen is when the property was being sold, then there might be a change in market value, because at that point, it would be eligible for, you know, someone deciding, I wanna buy this and, and, and do something large commercial here, and they may be willing to offer a good price to the landowner for that. And then once that happens, of course, it is valued higher. Uh, so it should not negatively impact the current landowner if it is so zoned, and yet enables that landowner to perhaps profit from that change in zoning category down the line. If we don't so designate it, and they sell their property to someone who winds up wanting to develop it commercially, and that person then, uh, petitions the town board for a zoning change, and gets that zoning change, then they've gotten the parcel at residential rates, but get to convert it to commercial, and so you know, maybe you see where I'm going. But maybe it makes sense to put it as part of the zone and let that person reap the benefit of it. And then, yeah, if it winds up impacting their taxes, that would be bad. So we might, you know, all right, so I, I am in, you and, you know, we're back and forth. But I don't see another place unless one of these existing commercials subdivides, where someone wanting to build a larger commercial enterprise can do so in Caroline. So one suggestion is to expand this, uh, district, and that's my first suggestion. The other suggestion would be to look at some of the land, um, to the east of Deerfield Lane, in between Deerfield and North Landon. And is perhaps, was currently a part of the hamlet of Beesimer. You know, I tend to be less happy about that. It's possible, oh no, I think actually if we go to the west of Landon Road, it might be that some of the land there would be appropriate for commercial development. I'm not sure. I think it's a farm we tried to preserve, and so, yeah. And the only other spot you can think of is way over then on the eastern side of town, and that would be the land in between, you know, uh, Slaterville Springs and the new hamlet of, um, uh, Caroline or Toby Town. And I think that's a, there's a possible region in there that we can look a little bit later. So I, I, I start with suggesting, does anyone else think there's any merit in adding some parcels here to this commercial zone that we've exist, the focus commercial zone as we've currently identified it? And we also should take up the question of whether the land on the north side of the road to the east of Thomas Road should be removed, has, has been suggested by Ms. Harrison.
Um, can we re-center that map now? Because I can move it. Um.
I think there's a possibility we should consider.
Bruce, it's very hard to hear you. Can you talk into that on the table?
Yeah, I did, I said, I think that there's a possibility we should think of some other down 79, but also it's commercial.
Where do you mean?
Just, just to help you with that, let me just show this other map. Um, this is the parcel class map. Is that up now?
Yep.
So the red parcels are commercial parcels. They're currently commercial properties.
That's very interesting. Um, let's start with, um, the suggestion that the parcels, the red parcels essentially across from the Caroline School should not be, um, commercial. And that was suggested by a member of the planning, she on the planning board? Yeah.
No, she on the review board.
Review board. And her, her, um, concern is that this is, um, and the, the intersection has, um, kind of dangerous, and has a lot of high-speed traffic coming down 79, and, um, and she's worried because there are schoolchildren here. And she just thinks that this is a dangerous intersection, and there's also a lot of bicyclists. I actually thought that this parcel on the corner here, um, can you see where my hand is? I don't know if you can. It's the southwest parcel of the intersection.
Is it here? Are you talking about here?
No, I'm talking about the southwest parcel, the catty corner, of course.
Oh, oh, the one that used to be, um, the ice cream and hot dog place. Monchies, Monchies, thank you for the name.
Yeah, isn't that part of Carson's? Isn't that where the, it looks like a house, but it doesn't evaporate as a house, I think. Yeah. Isn't that part of Carson's? Isn't that where the, it looks like a house, but it doesn't evaporate as a house, I think.
I thought he was partial. I thought he lived there, actually.
Oh, maybe he lives there. Okay, well, that's possible. I just, I don't know why I thought it was a commercial.
No, no.
There's a billboard there that, or a big sign that he uses for advertising, but I think.
Yeah, they converted munchies into a residence.
Ah, okay. Uh, so what did people think about that? About, about this area? Um. The, the area that across from the school. I guess I think it has been commercial for a very long time. Ernie, Ernie is trying to get back in.
Yeah, I just tried to let him in.
Are you talking about this? I'm just trying to locate.
Oh, yeah, you're right. So you're right. Now, the northeast corner. So those two pink parcels, yes, right in there, those are the ones that we are and there is, you know, of course, the, there's the Thomas Road Wetland, and it extends into those parcels somewhat. So they are restricted in terms of how much more development could take place on those, um, beyond what's already there, probably.
Yes. Um. Go ahead. Michelle, and then Barbara.
Uh, I, I have a couple of things to say. I guess I, talking about these parcels, I agree, those have been commercial for a long time. And isn't that one of those of the Hunts Auto Repair?
Yes. Yes.
And so, yeah, so that's that's been commercial for a long time. And I, I understand Ellen's uh, points there, but we don't have schoolchildren walking along Route 79 there. Nobody's walking the school from that I'm aware of, from that area. So I don't think they're at risk. Um, the other thing I would say is I agree with um, uh, Bill's suggestion of expanding, expanding the commercial zone and expanding it in the way he describes. I do think we should expand it because that's one of the main complaints. It's exactly the same size as what's there already and, you know, needs to be expanded. Uh, and I, I could see expanding that, that section that Nan's highlighted. I think Bill brings up interesting concerns that I hadn't thought of. Uh, I don't know how to address those. I disagree with expanding, putting more commercial areas further down Route 79. Um, I would go, I would expand the current commercial area, the current pink area, so it's a larger area in that one area, that one spot. That's all I have to say.
Um.
Uh, yeah, thank you. Um, yeah, a question that I have, well, I guess I have three comments. One is the parcel that is um, not Hunts, not those two Hunts buildings, but there's actually a residence that's at the northeast junction of Thomas and Route 79. Um, a good part of that is the water resource overlay. Um, and so I have concerns about even the potential for it being developed as a commercial property because a lot of that is in the water resource overlay. So I would rather see that parcel, that corner parcel, removed from, from the commercial district. Um, what I, what I would be in favor of is um, including the red outlined uh, parcel to extend uh, the south of 79 Commercial District uh, to the east and would further propose that we might even consider extending that all the way um, on 79 to the, to the junction with Lounsbury Road. Um, not, not, not all the way down necessarily, but that first, um, like that first parcel that, that is adjacent to 79.
Sure.
You know, so that's actually two parcels, it looks like, that it would extend to Lounsbury. Um, and then I, I would not um, recommend uh, or adding another commercial district uh, to the west. Um, uh, again, because what we're trying to eliminate here is the, you know, kind of, um, you know, we're trying, trying to have a centralized uh, commercial area and not, um, you know, different, um, you know, different nuggets of uh, clumps of commercial districts, you know, truly commercial zones uh, here and there in, in the town. So yes, there are businesses and commercial uses within the hamlets. Uh, but we had talked about a singular commercial district to try and cluster that in one area uh, with, you know, some planned uh, development there.
Okay. Um. Ernie, did I hear you say something before?
Um, I was just going to wonder whether we were under any obligation to maybe ask the people that own those parcels, whether they would like to be in a commercial district or whether they give a hoot.
I think that would be very good of us to do that, and I'm perfectly happy to do that if we can find the names.
Uh, yeah, the names are fine. And Ernie, honestly, I had the same thoughts. I, you know, on the other hand, we haven't done that in general, but you know.
No, we haven't, you know, and, and but, but.
But this is and in particular, I would want to give them the assurance from the assistant department that this doesn't change things for them.
Right.
Yeah. Um, no, I mean, you know, I mean, the, the maps have been, you know, kind of out there for a while and, you know, when we're making changes, you know, kind of fine tuning things like this, kind of, you know, yes, it'll get brought up in our next presentation if we have one, but you know, it may just surprise the hell out of somebody to find that, oh, I just, I just bought a lot right next to a place that's now zoned commercial, um, or, you know, what have you. So, um, anyway, um. Yeah, this is, uh, this has always been very difficult for me. The, the drawing of lines um, is um, is tough. Uh, and, you know, although I'm firmly believe that uh, free enterprise should, you know, be given a certain amount of latitude. Um, you know, I'm not particularly happy about seeing, you know, Walmarts happening over there in the new hamlet of uh, Toby Town, um, you know, so, um, that's, that's my piece. I guess, you know, I, I do think it would probably be good to um, to communicate with those law owners specifically, um, if we're going to make these changes.
Yeah, I agree because this is um, sort of, we're we're past where most people have thought we were, so we should make, reach out. Um, I, I want to say that I very much agree with Barbara about this piece on the corner because this is an enormous wetland, and I don't know if this has been in commercial use, this piece.
Did I just do the line on?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, it, it looks like it has a greenhouse. I think it's a house with a greenhouse attached, but I don't think the greenhouse is, is in use. Am I, is that, am I correct in my thinking?
I, I think you're correct. I think part of it fell down, didn't they? But it, it has always been a residence for as long as I've been here.
Yeah, I think we will, I will include that in the parcels that I, that I write something to. Um.
Well, I, I also agree with Barb's, that is really all wetlands there. I don't even, we used to make jokes about when it was for sale, them supplying a scuba, uh, snorkeling set with it when it was.
Yeah, it's definitely a giant wetland.
Yeah.
The wetland and you, and were you thinking of taking out not just the corner piece, but the corner piece in these other two parcels or just the corner piece?
I was, I was suggesting just the corner piece.
Yeah, the other two pieces are not as wetlandish. Um, I would like to suggest that we go from the east to the west along 79, if, if Nan can move her map just so that we all look at it, the entirety of 79. So can you move us to the, I don't care, east to west, west to east, whatever you prefer.
Do you, but where do you want to go?
Well, let's start.
Yeah, start where we have, um, start at one end of the town. So here is one end of the town. And the first thing that we sort of come to is the, the new hamlet of Caroline. And then we go along this. And the next thing we come to is is Clayderville Springs, that we're thinking about that area. Um. And then we have another hamlet.
Yeah, West Clayderville, yeah.
The hamlet of West Clayderville. And then we have this commercial area. Let's move a little further along. And we have one of our more, I would say, suburban areas there with Deerfield and Pheasant. And um, then we go a little bit more to the left. I guess that's the west.
I'm, I'm all.
Are you at the end? Because you're at the end of the back then.
Okay.
Okay. No, you're not at the end of the map, right? There's more.
But she can't scroll anymore.
Oh, you can't scroll.
This is the end of the map, on 79 here.
Ah, okay.
I can't go anymore. That's the end.
Where's Beesimer?
Uh, so right there, I mean, right at the very edge. So if you file 79 across, there's the Beesimer Hamlet, and there's Beesimer Road coming up. Um, and Beesimer Hill Road. So there we are. Yep.
Okay. Okay.
Our, our other suburban area.
Here.
Nan, could you put that map up again that showed all the commercial land on 79 existing?
Yeah. So I believe that red is commercial and blue might be community service. Blue is community service, yes.
So, right, so the school is blue, for example. Um, I'm a little confused. The community service that's there at the south end of Snyder Hill Road.
Church.
Oh, that's, oh, all right, Bethel Grove Church, right, right, or one of those. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That must be those storage units and that's the land, though.
Yes.
Brown is apartments.
Right, no, but if you, but if you go up, there's some sort of reddish there that's just to the left of Landon, that'd be, that'd be this.
It's the apartments, right.
That's the storage unit.
Yeah.
This is storage unit?
Yes.
That looks.
Uh, actually, that might be the solar panels. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Those, those are the storage units.
Those are the storage units, yeah.
Yeah.
And then so what we're thinking then is adding this area and this in there.
Again, these are what's currently listed as commercial according to the assessment department. You know, we have commercial properties that are greater than this, you know, um, because we have a lot of.
Better taxed is commercial properties.
Right.
Right. So on, on Boysville, that's um, I don't know, they make kitchens, right? They make kitchens and counters and stuff?
Yeah, Red Barn.
Red Barn, yeah.
But we're still thinking of leaving the field across from the school as a commercial, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I didn't hear anyone voicing that we should take that out.
Thank you.
Is there, can we continue further? Is there any more commercial along 79? I guess my question is, um, um, Kim Wetzel came and talked about his airport. Did I tell you where I think we are with that? He has not gotten back to me. I wrote to him. I said, as far as I can tell, it's not listed by the FAA. It's not listed as a commercial airport. It's a mode airstrip. He has, he did not reply when I asked if it was used commercially. Bill?
All right, so, yeah, so on that, I mean, I think one thing is important, Kim was clear to say, hey, I've been, you know, a business owner operating this town for 50 years. I'm reaching kind of a retirement age, but I've set some stuff up my property. And the implication I got, implication I got was, you know, to help fund the rest of my life. One example of which is this airport. So I think we've been focusing on the airport, and I think that that's not the whole picture for him. I'm not sure what else he's done, and I was, I think that the letter I learned him would be, you know, take a look at the zoning law and the other things you're planning to do with your property and tell us where there, if there are issues and, and bring your concerns to us, and we'll see if we want to address, you know, if we can address them or need to address them. But I think it goes beyond the airport. That's.
I think it does, too. And I said, is there anything else you want to talk with us about?
Okay, and, and as, as far as the airport goes, I mean, there's been mention that, well, if it's a home business, of course, it's allowed anywhere, but you know, I have a, if he's using it himself, it's not commercial, doesn't matter. If he's using it once or twice a week for someone for hire, like, that's probably fine, too. That would almost be a home business. But if it gets used frequently, I have a hard time looking at him at an air, as an airstrip as secondary to the residential function of a property if it's used a lot. So.
Right, and I, I, I asked him, I don't know if the airstrip is on the piece of property that he resides on or is on the piece of property that he had, because he has several pieces of property.
Right, but the thing I just want to add, one last thing, which is a friend of mine, actually, in Lansing, did live near someone who had this little mode strip. And at some point, the fellow decided to start teaching flying lessons of ultralights. And it was indeed very noisy and very annoying. And this friend of mine who happens to be a lawyer looked into it. Indeed, it was not allowed by their zoning. She got it shut down thereby. But, you know, it is not without its impact on the area if it's being used frequently such as for lessons every afternoon or evening and weekend. So I, it's something to approach carefully, I guess is what I'm trying to say. But I also think that there's other uses besides the airport.
And see if he has anything else to say.
I would imagine that if there's an actual money exchanged for the use of this property, that the federal people are going to have something to say about it. Um, you know, I mean, I looked into this documentation a little bit, and it looked like, you know, if you wanted to start a little commercial strip, you could do so, but it required, you know, certain widths and certain distances and clearances and all of this other stuff. And I'm sure Kim Wetzel didn't do any of that. Um, so, and there's also a procedure that actually goes through the town for an approval for an airport in order, type. Um, so I don't know that we need to address it. Um, uh, in, in some things, it's better to address it by not addressing it at all. And, uh, you know, if somebody wants to put it in an airport, they can damn well ask for a zoning change. Uh, you know.
And Ernie, my other question there is, you know, if, if someone decides to give lessons in, in one or two-seater aircraft and charge for that service, is that the same thing as a commercial airport? I mean, I, and.
Well, I, until the, till the lawyers got involved, until somebody got hurt. Um, and, and then I think you'd find the answer to that.
Um. Yeah, in, in order to walk the lessons, you are supposed to actually be a commercial airport. It's like a thing.
I mean, drones are, are being developed, you know, they're going to get bigger and bigger until you can go and put your butt in one and go flying off to wherever you want to. I mean, we're going to the age of the Jepsons here before too long, so. Um, yeah, so we obviously aren't going to, you know, disallow car transportation. So how can we disallow, you know, air transportation?
Personal air transport.
Uh, you know, uh, so I, I, I think this is one thing we just best leave, leave alone.
Okay. Well, I, um, I'll go back and read what I wrote to him and see if there's anything else I think I need to say, but at the moment, I don't think there's anything I, much I need to say because he hasn't got back from me. Um. So does anyone else I, um, we will consider? Um, I will write to the people that we have talked about this evening in terms of putting it into the commercial zone and taking that at the commercial zones, and that we are looking at that and asking their opinion and saying that what we've heard from the town, and saying that they might suggest calling the assessor if they have questions, but the assessor tells us that things are assessed at current use, but I'd ask and ask them for their, um, their views. Is there any place else on 79 or anywhere else in the town that someone wants to suggest that we add to the commercial zone?
Right, I, not particularly, but I think we should look, and maybe now's a good time, kind of Freddy Hard at that land between uh, the Toby Town, current Toby Town development on the edge of the Caroline Hamlet and Stedeville Springs and just see, but, you know, again, without resource maps up, it's hard to really do, but does anyone have stomach or desire or thought to add a focused commercial zone there? Barb has spoken against it. Um, Bruce, to use libels we can favor, if there's not much interest, we don't have to waste our time doing, looking at that. Um, Bruce, to use libels we can favor, if there's not much interest, we don't have to waste our time doing, looking at that.
We're off.
Not, not hearing a stampede, I say we skip it.
Yeah, I mean, unless there's somebody, you know, who owns property there that has some, you know, wants to have their property considered for, you know, certain type of zoning designation. Um, I can't see the point of, of creating something out of, of thin air. Um.
Well, you know, again, again, there, I differ with you. I mean, it is our job to sort of think hard about the town and plan for future growth. So I think we could.
Right, right.
But else you need to in this case.
Yeah.
I, I agree. I think it should stay the kind of development is, I think it should stay like Caroline Center.
Okay.
Well, we're talking about the ag land, Michelle, that's not part of Caroline, but, but it's, I think we just, yeah, we should just leave it.
I, I think we have enough commercial stuff at the moment. If we expand, uh, like we're proposing, that seems fine and we can worry about it in the future.
Okay, let us go on to, um, in that case, we will do all of these. Um, I'll bring them back at the next meeting. We should have more information and we can discuss them. I need to plug my computer in. Let me do that. And someone start on Article Five while I'm plugging my computer in, which requires crawling around on the floor.
Yeah, I mean, Nan, can you, do you want to be the one sharing the Google Doc? I guess Gina's asking.
Shoot, I don't have the Google Doc up. I've got the, I've got the, the word, the Word document up. Um, but I can get the Google back up, but it'll take me a minute.
That's okay. It's going to take Gina a minute also.
Yes.
Well, were we going to talk about conservation subdivisions at this?
Yes, but after this, but, yeah.
After this, okay.
All right, so you'd rather have the Google Doc up than the Word doc? I gotta get, I gotta find the link for that. Hold on.
Yeah.
I have it, but my internet connection is so flaky that you don't want to hardly have me being screen sharing.
Okay. I am back. I have power.
Hey, Jean, um, Jean, just so that you know, um, just while Nan's finding the, the document, um. Jean, we did not approve the minutes of the August first meeting because there are changes to be made in them uh, that we didn't know if they had been made or not. So just so you know that that needs to be done at the next meeting.
Good, thank you. I didn't have a chance to do that today, but I will do that and bring you back. Thank you.
Um. I forgot to bookmark that, so I'm, I have to find the link.
Yeah, I mean, I know I sent it to you in an email at one point. That might help you. If someone gets. If someone can send it to you now. Yeah, I know, it's, it might be helpful if someone sends it to you right now. I, I can't do it easy from where I am.
All right, I think I have it now.
Good.
All right. So, so Jean, you're, you're, the, the agenda says, uh, you know, development standards, repair in areas. Um, so where do you want to start in this? Because I have some things I can say about repair in areas. But if we're not, and so I can just talk while that comes up, because it doesn't, at this stage, some of the first, but isn't, so, so first I. Okay, great. So, uh, first off, I mean, I thought it's, it's been a really crazy couple of weeks and I meant to actually send something written out to everybody because this would be easier if you had something in writing, but I didn't do that. So let me tell you what I can tell you. Um, as you know, I contacted Darby Kylie, um, from, uh, the, uh, environmental, whatever you call it, sustainability and environmental, whatever, for Tonka's County. About some things about, because they had a, you know, her department's one that created the model ordinance on which, uh, Jean crafted the, the section here. And part of what it was is I'm expecting to some extent, some pushback on the repairian zone protection. And so one of the queries I had for her was really the scientific, uh, underpinnings of, of the recommendations made in the, um, county's ordinance. And, um, because the, the preamble to the ordinance doesn't say a whole lot besides studies show this is good. And that could mean two showed it was good and a hundred showed it was bad, but they chose those two. But, but it really is something that is a scientific consensus. So it turns out there's a resource document that the county published and the scientific consensus, and I've now found this at the D C as well, is that a hundred-foot distance is kind of a, a, a good minimum scientific consensus distance for protecting a repairian zone, meaning that those hundred feet are sort of natively vegetated and designed to slow runoff and erosion and all that kind of stuff.
Hundred, hundred feet from where?
Hundred feet from basically the top of the bank.
Okay.
All right. Um, it depends on your purposes. If you're trying to create a wildlife corridor, they recommend more like three or four hundred feet. So it does depend on the purposes. Um, and, you know, you may be able to get away with some, some error things, but basically that, you know, the, the, the D C has like a three-zone buffer and they say but a minimum of a hundred feet and they give ranges for each sub-zone. Um, anyway. The, uh, the other thing I asked Darby was what other towns in, in Tonka's County have done something and what have they done? And so the other towns have done something, and this is related, i- is, uh, uh, town of Ithaca, town of Ulysses and town of Danby. And town of Danby did it recently as part of the zoning change. Ulysses and Ithaca were kind of in process when this whole thing went down in two thousand and six or so with, with the county anyway. Ithaca is very complicated. They have different length, width buffers depending on the watershed that drains, the size of the water that drains into their streams. So small streams and small watersheds have like a thirty-foot buffer. And up then like sixty or seventy feet and the largest ones have hundred feet. Um, Ulysses has somewhat smaller buffers, not a hundred feet. Um, Danby and what they just adopted, um, have pretty much what the ordinance says. Intermittent streams, about a fifty-foot buffer. Perennial streams, a total of a hundred-foot buffer. Um, but they make an exception in their hamlet zones. And they make it smaller in the hamlet zones. I don't have that language right in front. This is the part that would be better if I had it in writing for all of you. So that was one nuance that they did. Um, so bottom line, in terms of just underpinning and background and what are other people doing? Uh, the, these are good numbers that we're using, but there are some communities in Tonka's County that have adopted somewhat smaller numbers. And so we should be aware of that. The other issue is if there's a steep slope somewhere in that buffer, that part of the steep slope doesn't sort of count towards the buffer. You know, it makes some sense from like, you know, again, you're trying to slow runoff, so the steep slope isn't helping that much. You know, whether it counts as zero or some small part, I mean, you know, it, it was, it's not hard and fast, depends on soil type, et cetera. So it just seemed, I think, to them reasonable to discount that amount. But it does not, as our zoning ordinance say, that steep slope does not have to extend to the edge of the buffer zone. So I'm going to recommend a change to the language when we look at that clause, because it really can occur anywhere within the hundred-foot buffer. Doesn't have to be at the outer edge of it or extend to the outer edge of it. Uh, and lastly, it had to do with wells and sewage and septic systems. And as we were looking at things, um, you know, there's a clause that talks about sewage systems. And maybe we can go down to that because this would be much more sensible if we look at that. Um, and I can't remember what system it is, what's the clause it is. So keep scrolling down, Nan. It's any prohibited things, maybe? Yeah, not there. I think it's the prohibited section, so it's down below all this. Uh, yeah, prohibited. Okay, so four B. It says septic system drain fields and replacement of existing wells must adhere to a hundred-foot buffer from perennial streams. All right, so I talked to the health department. So existing wells there, and it's, it's a little clearer because of the comma placement in the, in the model ordinance, that does not mean a drinking water well. That there, some older septic systems have what's called a dry well or, or seepage pit. Um, and Ernie probably knows about these things. So that existing well is actually a sewage-related thing. And so indeed, the recommendation is that all onsite waste treatment components be a hundred feet away. So, um, that's fine. That, that, that three B is actually fine, uh, as written. It just has to be clear that wells is not drinking water wells. The language in the model ordinance is all sewage systems, comma, both drain field and race systems and replacement of existing wells, comma, must adhere to a hundred-foot buffer. So they clearly placed the existing wells in with those other things. So that's, we have to make sure is clear here. And maybe this does it good enough. But anyway, that is correct, hundred feet for that stuff. The other prohibition in the model ordinance is that a private drinking water well should not be closer than fifty feet to a perennial stream. And I have not, I don't think that's not in our thing here. Um, I have not been able to find, um, justification for that. The, the, the health department didn't know, didn't have anything that required that. Darby wasn't sure where that came from. There is something at the D C that says twenty-five feet. But the model ordinance, um, said private wells have to be outside of fifty feet from a perennial stream. And other than erosion while drilling, I can't think of why there's that prohibition. So I'm tossing that out to the zoning commission as to whether anybody has any thoughts, but we don't currently have anything that mentions drinking water wells, perhaps because we all thought the existing wells in four B were drinking water wells. That's the end of it.
Because those wells are, um, you know, the, the there's a connection between the water and a stream. When water level is low, the water that like now, what you see in the streams is actually groundwater and not flowing water. And so there's a connection between surface water and groundwater there. So that might be why, you know, they don't want the influence of surface water on wells. So that might be why that they, you know, they had that in them.
Yeah, that's a stretch. I think it makes no sense at all.
Okay, well, we currently don't have a prohibition on, on how close a drinking water well can be to a stream. Um, again, D C, I think, had twenty-five feet. Uh, the other, so you're saying leave it out, Ernie?
It's not broke, let's not fix it.
Okay, the other thing I will point out is the model ordinance had several other prohibitions of things that are not allowed. Um, that Nan didn't include, and I don't have those notes with me because I wasn't really prepared. So, uh, about parking cars, for example, um, within X feet of, of, uh, perennial stream. And things like that. And, and Nan, uh, may remember some, so anyway, she and I have communicated a little bit about this. Her suggestion was, you know, her, her judgment was that for Caroline, those didn't necessarily make sense in terms of, you know, our development along Six Mile Creek and residential, residential properties there and the politics of the town. And I concur with her judgment, but I will try to find this email that I sent. Or maybe Dan can pull it up, that listed the three or four clauses that weren't included. Um. Uh, and yeah, I guess I apologize, I wasn't, hadn't gone on my ducks in a row yet. So, uh, you guys go on and start reviewing this stuff and I'll see if I can find some of those notes.
Hey, Bill?
Yeah.
What, what was the, the, the distance, where you said, I think it was, uh, one of the towns had it smaller in the hamlets for the watershed overlay?
Yeah, and I can't, I don't, again, I, I didn't finish my research. So I know Danby, I believe, set something different in their hamlet zone than in their regular zones, but I can't tell you what that is. Because I don't remember.
I was just wondering, because it kind of makes sense for some of the people, but our town, all of our hamlet is involved as far as Brooklyn, Dale, Sladeville.
Yeah. And frankly, you know, that, that's a political, not scientific decision, right? You, 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 saying that is saying we don't want to cause a ruckus. I mean, there's no, you know, in some sense, it's almost more important in a densely populated area to keep that buffer in there and to keep pollutants and discharge and, and things from eroding. You know, people want to keep their property too. But it's just, you know, historically, development occurred close to the streams. So it can all stay there. But we're saying in the future, you can't, you know, uh, do some of those same things.
It has to be subject to some review. That's what we've been saying, right?
No, i- i- if, it says subject to review, but it also says within fifty feet, you cannot do these things. So, so it's not quite as benign as you're saying, Ernie. There are prohibited activities. There are only certain things allowed in that fifty feet closest to the stream and the next fifty feet out. Uh, you go up, higher up, you'll say this is what is allowed in those areas. Um, up, 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 so we can review some of that. Here we go. Is this it? Uh, yes. So that's the repairing buffer and you can have benches or seating, et cetera, flood control things, maintenance, you know, stream crossing things, public water supply. You know. But that's pretty much it. Those are the allowed activities.
So, um. Bill, do you want to, um, finish your research and maybe make some suggested changes to this area and then bring it back the next time?
Yes, that had been my intent for this meeting. So again, I felt us not quite getting there. And, uh, again, it's going to be very minimal. I think there's like a sentence here and I can definitely get you the numbers, say for what Danby, I'll give you a little chart of what the other towns did. In case you want to, you know, have that inform our discussion. Uh, Darby was very helpful in, in providing me with information and backup on that. Um, so sure, I'll, I'll pull something together this week.
Okay, so, um, I think the only other thing in Article Five that we are still somewhat contending with is the conservation zone.
What about noise?
Oh, yeah. I don't know.
The noise limit on, on, uh, home businesses?
Uh, I read this stuff Nan sent. I think, um, and then I talked to a couple of people who deal with noise complaints in various places and, uh, it is very hard to control. Because it is an intermittent, because what people are concerned about generally are this, are intermittent noises. In other words, like parties that get insanely loud or, um, everything goes along fine and then there's like, on Sunday every afternoon, there's like the revving of engines or something. So, and that's the difficult part is how do we, how do you control that? I'm, I, I like the one-hour average. What do other people think about that?
I think we have to be really careful with this one. I think, again, it's, uh, better to make it vague and, and, uh, leave it to the interpretation of, uh, somebody else, because we try to start writing some rules. It's, you're just opening up a Pandora's box.
Um. Yeah, I think the, I mean, the, the fact is the ambient noise level in many places is already about fifty-five decibels if you live along seventy-nine, for instance.
Sure.
Um. And this says whichever is less at the property line. I think this is just very difficult. Anybody else have any suggestions?
Yeah, I don't, I'm, I don't want to leave it too vague, um, because then it, it, that's puts in the boat of the V board gets a lot of heat. Um, other times we tried to not be vague for exactly that reason, but uh, I would say I like the, you, the referring to the ambient. So I'm, you know, we said that last time, that's good. And, um, we got some feedback recently on the battery siding law from Guy Crowe that has some comments on noise. I need to review that and then I may have some more um, useful comments to, to give you guys. But he's pointing out that, you know, there it's an eight-hour average and that reason it's an eight-hour average because it was stolen from a different law relating to solar power. And he pointed out the eight-hour average is probably not a good choice because you could have already loud noise for an hour and then very quiet for seven and, and conform to the law. So I think you at least need like a one-hour at most averaging period. Uh, he also suggested, I think, you could have a basic, at least an upper threshold too, like, you know, even if it's transit, you probably don't want a hundred and twenty-decibel noise. So maybe there needs to be an absolute cap of no noise exceeds X decibels. And on average over an hour doesn't exceed this or the ambient.
Okay, um, then I suggest if you have that, you've got that from Bry, from Bry, that's the combination of guy and crow, subscribe. Uh, if you can bring that to us next, uh, time we meet as well, then I think maybe we can do that.
Sure.
Great. Um, with that, let us move on to the conservation subdivisions. So so Nan, what do you have to say to us about these?
Well, um the way that it's written is that they are applied to major subdivisions. And so would not apply to, you know, folks who are doing just, you know, splitting off a couple lots. Um, these are major subdivisions that would go through the major subdivision review um section of the subdivision law. Um, the conservation subdivision technique is is designed to allow for um, it's a what's called the density neutral technique. So if you're in the ag residential district and you have enough acreage and, you know, we're at three acre. If you you have um enough acreage and you get with the total acreage, you calculate that you're eligible for 60 houses. The conservation subdivision gives you the same 60 houses. So it has nothing to do with density. It has everything to do with layout. So the premise is is that it's a den, it's a, it's a sighting method that results in a certain percentage of uh preserved open space with the house sites um strategically located to um work with that parcel to provide, I mean, ultimately to provide visual um access to that open space, physical aspect to those, to that open space. So the subdivision itself is is valued and valuable um because it has the preserved open space and is an amenity for the residents in that um in that area. The preserved open space can be a woodland, it could be a meadow, it could be an agricultural field that stays agriculture. Uh, some of the ones in Pennsylvania are built around a horse theme. And so the barn and the trails and all of that are the agricultural uses that are on the preserved open space. So there's a lot of different things you can do um other than just let it sit there and turn into a forest over time. Um, and so it is a way of allowing you know, a large subdivision to occur, but in a way that's way more tuned into the environmental characteristics of the parcel. So it kind of turns on its head. How we have all been thinking and taught over the years how subdivisions are done, which you have a three acre minimum lot size and you have a 30 acre lot, you draw in 10 lots and um put a road in and every part, every house has three acres uh in a in road frontage. And the conservation subdivision looks at these as from a conservation perspective. So the 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 first step is identifying the uh environmental features on the parcel that are um kind of your critical sensitive locations like wetlands, streams, flood plains, uh very steep slopes and things like that that are included in that open space. And then you look at, are there any other neat, unique things about that parcel? Does it have um, you know, a pond? Does it have a um, you know, some sort of unique knoll that, you know, makes it like a uh a part of the landscape that looks different? Is it a nice view? There's all sorts of things that can be chosen to contribute to that 50% open space. So the 50% is um, it's something that you can decide, but that's the commonest percentage of preserved open space um that there is. So you start off by first identifying the environmental features. Um, and then you take however many um residences you're eligible for. And instead of worrying about the lot lines, the most important thing in a conservation subdivision is actually the building envelope of the house. Where are the houses going to go? So you cite the houses that you're eligible for, the house sites strategically on the parcel um to maximize um a visual and physical access to the open space and amenities. The third step is then you find the most efficient way of connecting those houses with internal streets and driveways as they're needed. Um, and then the very last step of the conservation subdivision technique is then you draw in the lot lines, which are actually the least important part of the whole thing. In the lot lines, in a conservation subdivision, the whole point of it is to allow flexibility so that you can create. Um, maybe there'll be some small lots, maybe there'll be some very large lots. Um, you can configure them in any number of ways to meet any number of development goals and desires that you have because you're not confined to a certain lot size. That most of our our typical suburban kind of subdivisions are uniform in their appearance because every lot is the same and every lot has the same setback. Every, you know, every house site pretty much looks like every other house site. So the conservation subdivision by purpose kind of turns, turns the development steps around. And those four steps that are outlined in this section are the four steps. They are the the way that you do a conservation design of a subdivision. You start by understanding the environmental features and the placement of the building envelope of the house is primary rather than the lot lines. Because the lot lines in and of themselves don't have any impact on the landscape. It's where the building, where the roads are. So it really focuses it focuses on um, you know, finding the the optimal um locations. It could result in a cluster of houses, but result in several clusters of houses across the landscape. It could result in the houses being spread out but strategically located around some sort of environmental feature. Um, the the hallmark of a conservation subdivision is flexibility. Um, there's lots of, there's, you know, you can have individual wells and septic. Um, you can also have a cluster where you have a community well, like would be a public water supply for that development and a community septic system. Um, and and the open space is, could have many things. Sometimes it could be maintained, it could be like, say you have a farmer who needs to and wants to sell some of their land. So they can take their density that they're eligible for, create this conservation subdivision, but still maintain a big chunk of the land as agriculture that they can continue to own and to farm. Or it could be owned by homeowners association if the if the if the subdivision is big enough, it could have a homeowners association. Or that open space could be split up. Um, so you're basic, so it could be split up among multiple landowners in the subdivision. And that part of their parcel is de-restricted so that it can't be um further developed or or um subdivided. So there's lots of opportunities for different styles and types of houses, lot sizes. Um, it tries to minimize the amount of roads and driveways to be the most efficient that it can be. Um, and I I think offers um a re, a night, it's one of those few zoning techniques where you you get to meet a whole lot of goals. You get to meet a lot of environmental goals as well as it's really not taking anything away from the landowner. The landowner still gets the same density whether they did a conventional subdivision or conservation subdivision. So it's it's not changing the density at all. The density is calculated from the total parcel, not from the 50% that's left over. So that's a really important point. A lot of people think you have your you have your 30 acre parcel, you have to preserve half of it, that's 15 acres. So you only have 15 acres to count your density from? No, that's not how it works. You count the density from the entire parcel. So the landowner is not losing any of that potential development capacity. It's just citing of those houses that has to be different. So um, that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Okay.
Question.
No, go ahead.
If you have a conservation subdivision and you leave open land, there's no ru, no rule, no law, nothing that states that that land has to be public, correct?
Correct, that would be up to
Public access.
Yeah, you can
Wouldn't be any public access.
Decide to have it in public, but no, it's private. It would be owned by somebody, it would be owned by the original owner or multiple owners or the homeowners association.
Right, because I I like this original thing you handed out here, conservation subdivisions. This handout was quite a long time ago, you handed it out. And it goes through what you just stated. And in the end, it, you know, has the conservation subdivision results with a picture. And then it has, instead of this, and this is where it's laid out and each house has different sized lots and everything else, but it doesn't take up that land.
Right.
Majority of the land. My thing is that chances of a conservation subdivision and somebody keeping the land open is not going to make that land public access.
No, there's not, there's never any intent to make it public access unless that landowner wants to have it open for public access.
Right, so that's what are we achieving other than open private land?
You're achieving preservation of sensitive environmental areas, open space. And if it happens to be farmland, it allows you to continue to farm um some our por, portion of that land and have developed.
Well, I can see that if it's sensitive areas or not, but but then when you look at the way this is laid out in your last picture, if that's not sensitive land and didn't need to be or great agricultural land, to me, that's a much
Well, it's still open space that contributes to the environment and the rural character of the town.
Whatever.
Um, Michelle?
Uh, I guess my question is, uh, and maybe you've sort of answered this, if, like, who maintains that that open property? Like, who, say, arranges for mowing or or whatever?
Depends on who owns it. If it's owned by a landowner in whole so that all 50% of the parcel is is say owned by the original landowner, they keep it for themselves, they maintain it. Or do whatever, if they're going to farm it or whatever they're going to, or it sits there. If it's owned by a homeowners association, the homeowners association must take responsibility for maintaining it. And if the open space happens to be split on any number of parcels, then it's the individual landowner that maintains it. Or, you know, in that case, it probably would just be, maybe someone would bush hog it once a year. Or maybe it would over time turn into a forest. I don't know. There might not necessarily be any maintenance on it if it's, if the desire is to just leave it as open space. So it depends entirely on the parcel and how it's laid out as to who the ownership is. But someone, someone owns that land. It's not just this no man's land of no one. You know, it's taxed, it's a taxable parcel, just like any other land. It's just not developable.
Um, Bill?
All right, so a- and Bruce, so I sense a certain amount of skepticism on your part on on the benefit of this. But, you know, there are benefits to having open space and that's why it's called for in the comprehensive plan. I mean, on the one hand, it is simply, you know, wildlife, right? I mean, there there's there, in- instead of a suburban development where everyone's got a few acres and it's lawn and a couple bushes, you might actually, I mean, it could be a forest, as Nan just pointed out, maybe, so or it could be a field or a shrub or whatever. So there's wildlife habitat, there's the cleansing properties that, you know, that greenery, the filtering of the water that that stuff does when it's not, you know, again, all all lawn or whatever. So there are benefits to open space and the comp plan points that out and calls for them. Uh, just frankly, the benefit of, as she said, the rural character, not seeing a bunch of houses, not seeing a suburban development, but instead seeing some houses tucked away over here and then a larger spans that's not houses. That's what the town has said it wants. Um, people, you know, talk about liking the open space in town. So that that's, there, there is a real benefit there. Um, and that's why I think conservation subdivision is a good idea. Uh, and again, it doesn't have to be maintained as Nan has pointed out, like, like a field. It could be, you know, maybe what you're saying is it's a, it's a forested area. They develop a few parcels along the edge, leave the whole center part a forest or let it let it grow up. The one question I have for you, Nan, you stated this at a previous meeting, so I think it bears repeating and maybe some elaboration. But the one difference, though, it does not change the number of houses built. It obviously changes the lot size. That rather than, say, carving up 100 acres into a bunch of five or six or eight acre parcels, you're likely carving it up, leaving 50 acres undeveloped. And then the other 50 acres are going to be one or two or maybe three acre parcels. And you have stated in a past meeting that that has proven to actually be very attractive. Because I think a lot of here, around here, a lot of people have the thing that I want my own check of land. I want my five acres, I want my 10 acres to do what I want on. And so that it would seem undesirable to buy into a community where you're only getting two acres, even though there are the other 50 acres that you could enjoy. So I'm interested in hearing more from you on, in practice, in other communities, how, whether these have proved, been proven to be popular or un, not popular.
Uh, they've been proven to be very popular because people want to live near land that is preserved. A- any land next to a conserve parcel, um, a park, um, and and things like that that people know are not going to be further developed, um, tend to be more valuable and very attractive. Especially when um it's a subdivision that allows for the people in the subdivision. If, let's say it's a homeowners association and there's trails um through there, there's an opportunity for the residents themselves to use that land. Um, that that's very attractive. Like I said, there's, there's one I know of in Pennsylvania that's a horse theme. And the horses, you know, they have paths and trails for the horses. And part of the open space is a pasture for the horses. And all of the houses are oriented toward being a horse community. And it's very valuable. So I think they, I think they have a very good track record. And a lot of people, you know, a lot of people want to be, have access to the rural landscape and to land, but don't want to maintain five or eight acres of lawn um or pay the taxes on eight acres. So this gives you a lot of flexibility to create some that are small, some that are big. You can create some estate lots in there that are very big. So it gives you the freedom to have a whole lot of different um opportunities for different, different, you know, different stripes for different folks.
But but couldn't we do that without this law? I mean, isn't the the average lot size thing allow us to do all of that without having a whole section devoted to it?
Uh, with the big exception of that the average lot size does not require any um open space to be preserved. If you want to say that you can
Right, but 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 there's nothing, there's nothing to keep somebody if it's, if it's an economically viable structure for, to make good lot sales in the subdivision and the developer recognizes it's a moneymaker, they could do it without having a conservation subdivision law. I'm I'm just, just kind of trying to make the point that
I mean, so someone willingly comes up
A good developer, a wise developer, if there's money behind it, will do the job to make the money. So it's
Yeah.
I think making an argument that these are, that these are profitable uh because of the law is is specious.
No, I I think it's because the easy way to do a subdivision is not necessarily this way. It's easy to take a piece of land and have your surveyor go out and draw, draw lots and And the experience over the last thirty or forty years is that when these things are voluntary. Uh, and there's, you know, there's, you can do whatever you want, you can do it the old fashioned way, you can do it the conservation way. Um, it rarely happens. It's only when the community says, this is what we expect to happen, is when they actually do it.
Okay, let me ask another question. Um, do we have any examples of a conservation subdivision? On a smaller piece of land? I mean, we very commonly see parcels that are, you know, I mean, for, for our develop. I mean, there are not subdivisions rolling out at a hundred lots a a piece around here, haven't ever been, never will be. Um, the normal subdivision is somebody buys a twenty acre parcel, divides it into eight, ten lots. And, you know, they 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 make their money off of it. Um, and, you know, because a a small developer can't afford to buy any more than that. Um, there also are not large tracts of land kind of readily available. Uh, I don't know what the average parcel size is in the town of Carolina, but I'm willing to bet. That, you know, the sixty lot subdivision is not going to be the norm. Um, so the norm is small subdivisions. And I would opine that most subdivision activity will continue, as it has. Uh, to be under the the major subdivision threshold. Um, and so conservation subdivision will be a moot point.
Well, yeah, that's why we have the average lot sizes that we.
Right.
Small subdivisions kind of gets at that, you know, in a way. Without the process that goes into a conservation subdivision, but, um. So it, yeah, it's, it's, it's really not a useful technique for a one or two or three lot subdivision. But for a major subdivision that has five, eight, ten lots, yes, it very much is. We've all seen, you know, small parcels that are cut up into three acre. One acre, two acre parcels, and you know, you get the spaghetti lot that are just strung out across the hill. With one house dotted along the road, um, or the three acre blocks. Where every block has a house in the middle of the lot, and that's the kind of suburbanized look. Of a co- of a subdivision that the conservation subdivision tries to get away from, tries to give you.
I understand, I understand the aims, um, I just, I I find it. Um, you know, difficult to, um, put this into a zoning law for the town of Caroline. Um, I just don't think that we're ready for it. Um, and I don't think that the 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 town has the growth. Uh, or the growth on the horizon that's, it's going to make it worth it. I think that the first time this comes up, if this were law were passed, and the first time this comes up. We're going to have to go out and hire somebody to kind of, you know, deal with this. I mean, there's going to have to be some town staff person who's going to have to, you know, kind of help shepherd the the developer through the process.
Maybe, but they're hiring for a major subdivision that has a road, they're going to be hiring an engineer anyway.
And and presumably, they will hire a landscape architect who actually has been trained to do things in the appropriate way from the beginning. Um, yeah, so.
Perspective is that, you know, are you going to get a major subdivision now, or in five years, or ten years? Who knows, but it could sit there and be there for you should a sub- a major subdivision ever arise. And I don't see the harm in having it there as a tool to use should it arise.
Well, I agree with you on that point.
Bill?
So, yeah, I mean, so I agree with some of what Ernie has said, but but disagree in general. And and the ending point is sort of where I was going to start is, if, yes, this is likely to seldom kick in. At least in the next few years, five years in Caroline, but then, so what's the problem, I guess I have to say. Uh, I think it's wise to have to plan for the future. Because when, if a developer came in five years from now and suddenly wanted to develop a a forty lot subdivision. That's too late to then put this in place, right, once, you know, so I think it makes eminent sense to have it in place now. So if the need arises there, I just don't see the fact that it's three or four or five or six pages being a major problem. I would say, in, I agree that anyone could design it this way now, there's nothing preventing them from doing it. But, you know, patterns change slowly, right, habits change slowly. So if they've always kind of done it this other way, it's going to take a while before they start doing it this new way, and so that's why the the law is useful. Um, you know, I think that there's a certain amount of lethargy and upfront cost in terms of planning time. That would prevent this from being implemented if it's not a requirement. I would also say that a twenty acre parcel divided, being developed into eight or ten lots is extremely rare in Caroline.
Hasn't happened once.
Right, no, so you just said the typical development in Caroline is twenty acres being developed into.
No, no, I I'm saying that a more, a more typical development might be that, rather than.
Yeah, right, so again.
Nobody in any major subdivisions of the town of Caroline, we've already established that.
Right, so so any rate, so I was wanting to caution, you know, we don't have a lot of that going on either, it's like, I obviously, I misunderstood the way you put that. So anyway, I say, you know, I like it, we can tweak it, I think that it's good to have it there. So that if this comes down the pike at some point, it's there. Because again, it's too late, once the, once the chickens are out the barn door, or whichever animal you want to say, uh, has escaped. Then it's too late to close the barn door, so, um.
Michelle?
Was it because of, I think.
Bruce, I'll come to you in a second, Michelle has her hand up. Michelle?
Uh, yeah, I guess, well, first of all, I mean, isn't Boiseville an example of a major subdivision? So.
Yeah, we've had one.
Yeah.
Well, and I would say also, um, what about like, um, what is it? Those roads that come off of seventy-nine near the church, um. Now, yeah, and, yeah.
Well, the closest we've had is, again, the Fuller Road development, and actually, Toby Town, that never developed as much as the person wanted to, I think. That was divided into various lots, those are the two closest to sort of a suburban development.
Yeah.
So we have had developments like this. It's, it's, it's inaccurate to say that there's never been a development like this in Caroline, and so we shouldn't expect there to be one. So I think it's quite likely we will have them, there are large parcels that I've heard rumors that people would like to develop. And so I agree with everything Bill said, and then it seems like, why not be prepared? And also, I will say, one of the big complaints about zoning is that it has been that it leads to the suburbanization of Caroline. And it seems like this is the technique that would prevent that suburbanization. So that would address the critics, so one of the things that critics of zoning have brought up. So I guess I just don't see the problem of having something in place in case we do have a major subdivision.
Thank you. Bruce?
One problem that I can see with it is. You're eliminating the average income person. Because what this conservation subdivision is going to do is create high income properties. Five hundred thousand dollar houses. It it's just, you you're eliminating, like you said, we've had this talk forever about being able to afford to live in Caroline. Well, a conservation subdivision is not going to make it affordable.
Uh, Nan, could you speak to that?
Uh, yeah, I mean, so a conservation subdivision, it doesn't have to be single family homes. It could be creating, um, two family homes, or a mix of single family homes and multifamily homes. Um, it could create smaller lot sizes that may be more affordable. And they'll guarantee that they will be more affordable, but a smaller lot may be more affordable than requiring someone to buy. A three acre lot, for instance, so, yeah, is there a guarantee that these things are going to be affordable? The only way to guarantee that would be to require, um, in the zoning. Which some communities do, is to require, um, deed restricted below market rate units. Um, which is called inclusionary zoning, um, which many communities are doing to address affordable housing. That's a technique that you can, you can add to it. That's really the only way zoning can address, um, head on. The affordable housing, uh, issue by requiring them to be below market free houses. But I, you know, I didn't really think that that was something that.
Thank you. Michelle and then Bill?
Uh, yeah, I, again, uh, to to Bruce's argument, hasn't the the complaint been made? That, like, say with our, uh, three acre average lot size, that we will be promoting McMansions. So it seems to me that this is another way to prevent these, you know, homogeneous, large homogeneous lots. With McMansions that are also not affordable. I I just don't think there's any way you can guarantee that any new housing is going to be affordable, unless you do the technique that Ma- Nan just described.
Bill?
Um, yeah, and basically, you know, I I I agree, a developer will do what a developer will do. You know, they will do whatever they see as, um, being, you know, mark, you know, marketable and market worthy. And so if that is, uh, building five hundred thousand dollar homes, that's what they're going to do. And Bruce, yeah, unless we want to indeed do some deed restricted stuff, if we want the free market rule, that's what's going to happen. But I do not buy the argument that the conservation subdivision necessarily only creates five hundred thousand dollar homes. I mean, I don't, I don't think you've got the data to prove that, and it may be true, it may not be true. But I don't think any of us have the data, uh, on the top of our head to to prove it. I think you made a statement of a feeling, but there's nothing that says that that's true, that I can see. I think we allow small lots in various places in the town, but there's not going to be more than a few handful of major subdivisions likely. And so even if they were McMansion subdivision developments, there's still going to be a lot of other land for affordable hu- more affordable housing. But I do not buy the argument, I do not agree the argument that a conservation subdivision is necessarily going to be five hundred thousand dollar homes.
It's just all the imagery that I have in my mind of a conservation subdivision is, you know, these lush open fields. And the horses trotting around with the, you know, the beautiful wooden fences and all this stuff, it doesn't look like affordable housing to me.
Well, then maybe we should add some, some clauses that they have to have X percent affordable housing as part of them.
I don't, you know, I I don't, I I'm, I, I don't want to go there either, but.
Uh, Barbara?
Uh, yeah, just to comment with regard to affordable housing, that, um, not with regard to conservation subdivisions. But just a reminder that we did already talk about this, particularly when we were talking about, um, multifamily housing. And, um, and, you know, some of the issues associated with that. So it's not that we have ignored the issue of affordable housing, uh, uh, totally, uh, throughout the town. Um, but I I would not be in favor of requiring it in a conservation subdivision. Uh, but I am in favor of the conservation subdivision being included in the zoning law.
Thank you, Barbara. I'm going to ask, um, that we put a motion on the floor now, either to include this or to exclude this section. And, um, see if we have a second, and because I think we've had the discussion.
All right, so I I move we include it.
I will second.
Ernie is seconding that. Is there any further discussion? Uh, if not, I I will voice mine, I'm in favor of this. I think, um, I think it's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. I think, um, it preserves a lot of what people have said they like about Caroline. It preserves views, it preserves land for birds, for mammals, for, um. For wildlife in general, it preserves, um, it preserves, um. I'm kind of a non-suburbanization, and I think that that's critically important. I think, uh, people can do smaller subdivisions that are not major, if they want, without doing this. And I think that, um, I think Ernie, Ernie is right, that smart developers could do this anyway. The problem is that sometimes people decide to be developers who are not smart developers. They're just developers, they're just getting into the business. I've seen it happen with my work at the chamber, somebody decides they're going to be developer, and you're like, good God, you have no clue what you're doing right now. Because you've not done this before, and it's, it's, developing property is a hard, hard, hard job. So, um, and it requires expertise, it requires, you know, good architects, good engineers. Good landscape architects, sometimes what people try to do out of the back of their, uh, their head, and that doesn't work. So I am in favor of this. Um, does anyone else want to speak, or does anyone want to call the question?
I'd like to speak. Did we discuss some kind of bonuses for having conservation some subdivisions? We did, didn't we, or we talked a little bit about that?
I I had raised, I had raised that that possibility, that instead of making it a requirement. We actually, uh, allow a development bonus, um, for people who did do a conservation subdivision.
It's not in this, it's not as this is written at the moment.
No, it is not, no, we have not, we have not, not written that down in any place.
Just, I thought we discussed it, I was just wondering if we should discuss it anymore before we move.
Are you in favor of such a thing?
I would think.
I I I think it has a lot of merit, um, but, uh, I think that it it just adds. A a certain level of complexity to a, uh, a very complex subject already. And it's going to get to be really hard to administer. Um, without having any real experience in working under this set of rules. To kind of understand how they work for different sizes of properties. It is hard to really get a handle on what the economics of the subdivision. Of the conservation subdivision are, and at what level you would have to provide an incentive. To actually get somebody to do it. Um, Nan has opined that, uh, that, that any kinds of incentives don't work, um, which would, you know. Not, not be, uh, you know, so, so, you know. Barring any, any real science on the subject, I I think it's best just to. Get on with it and, uh, put this in and and leave it as it is.
Okay, I'm sort of carrying that as call to question. All those in favor of including the conservation subdivision in this article, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so that's five to one.
Bruce?
And that passes, thank you. So as far as I can see now, Article five is complete, except for the Riparian area and the noise. And Ruth and Bill is going to bring us back some noise about the noise. Areas next time we meet, and then I.
We need to go through the conservation subdivisions.
Yes, we do.
Yes.
We are not accepting it whole cloth here.
No, right, we haven't, but that's, that's the part we have to do. But besides that, I think we're kind of getting to the end of this, right? And I think we have, we got ten more minutes. Um.
Gene, I have, I have one question. Bruce, can you tell me, is Pete Hoyt still in the attendance there?
No, no.
Okay, never mind, I've passed then.
Okay, um. I'm not sure if we have time to go through this tonight. What do we think?
Go through what tonight? Oh, go through conservation, oh.
Let's all read it and mark it up for next time, and, um, for sure, and we can finish that then. I want to say that we're going to meet on the thirtieth, and we have very little agreement about September. Was going to ask people, the thirtieth works, looks like that works for everyone, then we have a lot of people going out of town, myself included. But I think I would always be somewhere where I can wifi in, though I'm not actually sure, I'm Nova Scotia, and Newfoundland.
Oh, you'd be on a half hour to different time zones.
I will, I I've never been anywhere with a half an hour different time zones, I'm very excited about that.
But, uh. I I won't be able to be with you guys on the thirtieth, but.
Okay, we'll, yep, struggle on. Um, so I'm wondering if something like, uh, meeting two weeks in a row. So I'm wondering if something like, uh, meeting two weeks in a row on September sixth might work. Either September sixth or another night that week. And I will send out something tonight or tomorrow morning to everyone and see if that works. Because it looks like the following week, whatever that is, is it the fifth? What day is the first Tuesday in September?
The sixth.
Sixth.
So the, the next one would be the thirteenth. I think a bunch of people are already out of town then, and some people are not, do not have wifi access. So I'm thinking the sixth and then later in the month. So, um, I will send that out and see what I get back from people. And, um.
And Jean, it sounded like Ernie was starting to suggest that maybe we start looking at the conservation subdivision. And I'd be willing to spend ten minutes on it, but does anybody else want to start on it?
I'm probably willing. Okay, let's, um, can you put that back up?
Oh, boy, now I have to find it again. For, just for the sake of time, um, let me put back up the document that it's not the Google Doc, but it's the same Word doc.
Sure, that's fine.
So, um, yeah, so I don't know where you, yeah, now I don't have any of the comments.
Right, yeah, we need our comment.
I've got it, sorry.
She found it.
You gotta be.
All the magical things.
Which word? Are you seeing the Google Doc?
No, so you have to stop this share and then start that.
Okay, see it now. So, we have gotten rid of a few sentences. Tell me if there are any comments here. The, the purposes are, such resources as for the land, further purposes are to.
So it looks like, looks like Ernie had a comment about, a question about which resources.
Yeah, and that may be because of the struck part, that.
Yeah, the important agricultural land, significant, you know, so. Yeah, why did we destroy, why did we strike that? I, you know, I guess that's a, it was probably, I said, why do we have this language in here? We already have it.
Yeah, you felt, I think you felt it was a repeat.
Yeah.
We can add some of those words back in, so it's.
I mean, this, this section has been designed in recognition of the need to protect certain resources or, you know.
Let's say important agricultural land, significant.
Or just important resources.
Okay.
That's all you have to say, you know.
Great.
Or the land in the process.
Thank you. And then.
Yes, okay.
These conservation providing greater design flexibility, diversity of lot sizes, resource lands, ag lands, applicability, all major subdivisions. I think, I think it would make sense to say again what that is, like number of units or something, because.
Or just, uh, all major subdivisions as defined in the subdivision law. Um, so people can
Okay.
So that they understand that.
Okay.
Alright, and then, and then I, I have my comment there. So there is an alternate design process that allows you to do something besides a conservation subdivision. Uh, what I was kind of wondering about, in, in my note there is, okay, so let's say someone gets some, you know, decides to develop a twenty, thirty, forty acre parcel that happens to be right part of one of the hamlets, you know, not a lot of those, but should that necessarily be designed as a conservation subdivision, or would that feel a little more natural if it was more of a suburban-style, traditional neighborhood? And I know that the.
Something in here that talks about.
Well, yes, and here's, it's, there's an alternate design process at the very bottom that says the, the review board can require that if in their opinion it results in a better preservation of open space. And my suggestion is not that. My suggestion is that in a hamlet zone, you give the developer the choice, the freedom to choose a traditional development process rather than a conservation subdivision process.
Agree.
In the hamlet zones.
So, explain that again, so are you saying?
Well, so, so what it says here.
Or you want to give them a choice?
I want, I want to allow the choice to do a traditional neighborhood development style development in a hamlet zone. I mean, I, I want the zoning division to discuss that. I'm not sure actually how I see a lot of that question, but I think it's worthy of a discussion.
I think that's a very good idea. Uh, I think, uh, what you're basically would be saying is a conservation subdivision with any of the hamlet districts maybe just to get rid of required by the review board, maybe designed as a traditional neighborhood design. If such layout is appropriate for the parcel proposed and developed, and if it will result.
Well, I'm, I'm taking away the requirement of more open space. You know, me, I'm, I'm the big open space proponent. I just sort of feel like, yeah, if you're doing a development that's really part of a hamlet, it might feel a little more natural for it to be kind of like a quasi-suburb, but you know, maybe that's stupid. So that's what I'm asking people to talk about.
I, I think, I think that makes a lot of sense.
I agree that it makes sense.
It says may be required. That's my beef. Under second line, it says may be required, and I'm saying it, it's not up to the review board. It should be up to the developer if they're developing in a hamlet zone. That's the proposal on the table. That's what I want.
I mean, the only difference between the two things is the, the sequence of events. I mean, they both have a fifty percent, you know, half of the land needs to be open space, right?
Well, that's, I don't know. Not a conventional, right. So I'm, I'm would maybe, yeah, so I don't know.
I think what this was saying maybe is a little bit different spin, and maybe you don't want to say may be required. But a traditional neighborhood design is, is, um, not a, like a one, a three-acre minimum lot subdivision. It's still a conservation subdivision with the houses clustered together to look like it's, you know, a traditional village or hamlet clustered. This is kind of your typical, you know, old-fashioned clustered kind of look. So in that case, yes, this was saying you would still have the open space with the traditional neighborhood design rather than, you know, something that was spread out across the rural landscape. So it, it's, I think, you know, yes, I totally get that a, a, a big chunk of open space in the middle of the hamlet might not be really what you really want. You really want your hamlet developed like a hamlet and look like a hamlet. So maybe, maybe you want a, the simpler thing is to take this out. And then under the applicability up at the beginning, where we say here it shall apply to all major subdivisions outside the hamlet, and that in the hamlet, the applicant could decide, you know, they can voluntarily use the conservation subdivision should they decide.
Yeah, that's a sent, yes, that's, I think, what my proposal is, or suggestion is. And, uh, yeah.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah. I mean, you could do in a hamlet, you could do a multifamily subdivision even in a hamlet.
Yeah, or anywhere.
Right. Okay, are there other comments in here that we should?
Um, let's see what else we have.
Go, go back up to the top as we.
Skip, you skipped over a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm at the top. This is the beginning.
Okay, good.
Okay.
The purposes, and then we're talking about how you're going to apply this. So we talked about, so you want to change this so that it's not in the ham, not required in the ham.
Right.
And you can just add that note now and, and doctor up good language.
Have we gone past the step back to building?
The what?
Where it says building step back?
No, we haven't gotten there yet.
Okay.
Alright, so I think this.
Comment is the fifty percent.
And again, I think as I know, I, I had looked into this, and yes, fifty percent is a very typical percentage. Uh, some were as high as seventy percent. I think I did see one that was thirty percent, but, uh, I, I'm in favor of leaving it at fifty. Other discussion?
Nope.
Nope.
I think the fifteen thousand square feet is a note on.
Yeah.
That's that, uh, discuss size percentages.
Yeah, Nan just thought we should talk with her, no, he's good. Where does the fifteen thousand feet come from, Nan?
It's a third of an acre.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, just that if you're, if you're having either a community, um, septic and community-wide well or water source, um, you don't need bigger lots.
Right.
Accommodate a septic system. So that, that is kind of just saying that that's the smallest lot size that you would, you would want to have in a conservation subdivision.
Why, why not smaller? I mean, your typical.
It absolutely could be, yeah.
Yeah, lot, lot size in Fall Creek, fifty by a hundred.
I mean, you might not want to set any minimum lot size. It just lets, let the process work its way out and let the developer make a proposal about what the lots should be based on what they want to do.
That's a great idea.
And, and that's what, that'd be my proposal is to strike, but I, I don't see, I mean, maybe it'll come back to bite me, but I don't see why we need to specify a minimum lot size in that, you know, conservation subdivision. Uh, presumably, you know, if they're doing anything decent, you know, they're going to realize they probably can't sell a fifteen by fifteen foot lot to someone. So they're going to make it some reasonable size. I think so. Anyway, I, I move, I will re-strike that sentence.
I'll second.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
Uh, this one was put in there before you had, had the discussion on building heights, so you might want to take that out.
I, I would agree.
Take it out. I mean, it's already covered under the use tables.
Yeah, I think it's in use.
I mean, there's no reason for a separate height limit there.
This one was added in because, you know, you wanted to make sure there was some sort of buffer between new houses and active farming.
To support agriculture.
Include this, you could change the definite, you could change the dimensions. Um, it was just a nod to knowing that, you know, when you mix residencies in with active agriculture, there, there are issues. There's noise, smells, and all sorts of things that ultimately the farmer suffers and not the residents. Because they, they start having a lot of, a lot to say about it. So that's why this was here. This is a standard kind of clause, but again, you can take it out if you don't feel it's important.
My sense is that, you know, if it's a pig farm, you can't get it far enough away. If it's a chicken farm, you can't get it far enough away. Um, you know, if it's a hemp field, you know, maybe no buffer is appropriate. It, it just doesn't, you know, let's, let's common sense prevail here and get rid of this sentence.
I agree.
I actually think that this is something that we mentioned to the, the people from the ad committee the last time when we spoke last night, who all not, seemed to be nodding that this was a good thing. So, um, I think what I would like to do is not get rid of it until I sends this off to Catherine and say, what do you guys think of this?
Yeah, yeah. So I'd say, yeah, tell them, you know, the, kind of playing deleting it or, you know, adjusting the sizes, yeah, see what they think.
Okay, I will do that.
Okay.
And I guess I'll suggest this might be a good stopping point for us, but that's just me.
I think you're correct. Okay, thank you. Thank you, everyone. I'm sorry I got on late. I will, uh, work on, uh, the minutes before this totally goes out of my brain. And, uh, I will see you on weeks on the thirtieth.
The thirtieth.
Thirtieth, and I will be home, so I'll be down at home hall then. Okay, hi, everyone.
Night.
Good night.